To the educator standards and practice discussion led by Dr. Olivia Oxendine. Dr. Oxendine.
Thank you Chair Davis. This is Olivia Oxendine, chair of this committee. Along with me in this leadership responsibility is Ms. Amy White. One action item this week or this month ESMP 1 which pertains to the changes in LICN 001. The changes are recommendations coming to us from Pepsi. We had a very good discussion last month on these revisions. I'm going to ask Dr. Tom Berlino if he will come forward and just kind of give us a refresher on those changes. I will add that in addition to, I think it's part of the same presentation, last month I asked Dr. Tom Berlino if he would bring us some basic kind of fundamental information on the number of active teacher licenses in North Carolina. In other words, that means the number of individuals who hold a license and they are actually employed. Is that correct, Tom?
That is, active licenses, they may or may not be employed.
But they're active licensed. This information is really telling. He also has it disaggregated in terms of the licensure categories. And pay attention to the data in terms of the categories where we have a high number of active license and also pay attention to the areas where we, to me, really telling and a little bit troubling actually, where we have low numbers. We have high numbers, pay attention to that category. Pay attention to the areas where we were kind of deficient in terms of active license. So that's, that is the second part of the presentation. The first part of the presentation are those recommendations that are coming to us from Pepsi. We will act on those recommendations tomorrow. Very, very hard work, very time consuming because a lot of changes took place in that, I think it's in the area of the residency license. Also, something very important in the data, and you'll see this also in the second part of this presentation where he has the active license broken down in categories. One of the things that Pepsi did, and the recommendation is coming to us in just a minute, is expedite the time it takes for an outstate teacher to get that, to convert from the IPL to the CPL. That has been expedited. In other words, that teacher, as soon as all the requirements set forth by the state board have been satisfied, the person doesn't have to wait three years. The person can apply immediately. Pay attention also, that's important, but pay attention to the second part of his presentation where he shows how many teachers we have in North Carolina, outstate teachers with that active license. So I'll turn to Dr. Tom.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. Good afternoon, Board members. So, to introduce this again to you, I want to go over the rationale behind these recommendations for policy changes to LICN 001. And the first is to provide clarity to the field. There is some confusion about the implementation of the residency license, and that's due to the fact that the first expiration of a residency license occurred June 30th, 2022. And so anytime there's an expiration, that brings up lots of questions and issues that we hope to provide clarity so that doesn't happen again. Next, it is to align with current statute. There were some places where some language was not conforming to statute, and we pointed those out to you. And then finally, to provide better readability and organization. And then on the next slide, we've got an overview of the things that we've done here. And much of this is formatting and reorganization for better readability and better clarity. How one converts an initial license to a CPL. And then we address the residency license in its own section. All the policies related to the issuance, the maintenance, and the conversion of a residency license are now housed in one section. And then finally, some information regarding the emergency license and the limited licenses. So, I hope that suffices as a refresher, but I am happy to answer any questions that you might have about any of those policy recommendations that you heard last month.
Are there any questions? If there are none, you can proceed.
Thank you. So we'll pick up here on, those that are following along at home, Slide 25 of the presentation. And this is a request from the Board, first to clarify the provenance of some of our licenses that we issue. And those three licenses are permit to teach, the emergency license, and the limited license. So what is the origin and the basis for these licenses? And what is the rationale for these licenses was the request. So the permit to teach was established by state board policy. It is not in statute in LICN 001, July 1st, 2016. The rationale was to provide a means of licensure and employment for individuals who held a baccalaureate degree but did not qualify for a lateral entry license. There was a certain number of credit hours in the subject area that was required, and folks that didn't have that could go on a permit to teach and use that as a, as a means to move on to the lateral entry license. The second license is the emergency license. This was established in statute, session law 2017-189 on July 27th, 2017. This was part of the Excellence Educators Act. We often refer to it as Senate Bill 599 that made major changes to licensure. That included the elimination of lateral entry as a pathway and establish the residency license. This statute also provided the same type of thing, a means for those of licensure and employment to those who held a baccalaureate degree but did not have sufficient number of credit hours to qualify for the residency license, so it was used as a scaffold. We have maintained the permit to teach and the emergency license. The way we've done this is simply holding a baccalaureate degree would qualify you for a permit to teach. But to hold an emergency license, you need 18 semester hours in the content area. So that provides a second kind of entree. And then to hold a residency, you need 24 semester hours in the content area. And so this is a way to onboard folks that may have limited content at the beginning. They can start work, and they can work on that content acquisition until they get to the limited, I mean, the residency license, and then they enter that program and start their preparation. Next is the limited license, and it was established by session law 2019-212, Section 8.2. The rationale is to allow an educator to hold a three-year non-renewable license if otherwise the candidate would have qualified for a continuing professional license but failed to achieve the prescribed minimum score on the State Board of Education required examination. So, what's not said here is as important as what's said. The candidate must have completed their entire preparation program. All the coursework has to be done by the, by the end of those three years. If and only if the candidate has done that, but has not passed the test, then the candidate would be eligible for a limited license. Employment is a condition of holding this license. You must be employed in a North Carolina PSU, and that PSU must by means of affidavit certify that you are an effective teacher in the classroom. And that's that process. And if you will give me just a moment, I need to pull this up on my, well, it's hard for me to see it from here, but, so this is a report on the number percentage of active licenses by subject area and unique licensees. So what we've done here is taken general subject areas. So you'll see ELA, that's ELA, middle school and high school, but that's distinguished from ELA in the elementary school. Elementary is its own category. Same with math and science and social studies. Those are all at the middle school and high school level. And then we have exceptional children broadly. We don't break this down into subcomponents of these, these areas. But these are the major areas of licensure. These are, folks, the number of licenses that are currently active in the state. We don't know if those people reside in the state or if they're employed in the state. They're definitely not, if you see the total numbers down at the bottom. But that's the number of current active licenses we have. So we've also given you that as a percentage of all licenses that we issue. So you can see that a fifth of all licenses we issue in the state are in elementary education. 16.8% are in exceptional children. Now, what we did also was tell you how, what percentage of license holders, unique license holders, hold that particular license. So that's a little different if you think about it, because on average, every license holder in the state holds two licenses. So we're telling you how many, what percentage of those folks, of the individuals, hold that particular license. And you can see that 42% of our licensed, license holders hold an elementary license. And then a third of them hold an exceptional children's license. So, I can tell you what, and so I think a natural question to arise from that, what's the intersection between those two? So how many of our elementary teachers also hold an EC license, which is very important to our schools? And I can tell you that that is not, of course, if you look at that, the upper bound of that would be around 75%. Like, if you added those two together, you would say the most that could hold that is 75%. But that's not the case. It's more about 16 or 17%. So about 10,000 teachers across the state hold both an elementary license and an EC license. And so, there's been a lot of talk, I know from our, our friends in EPPs, there's many, there's, there are a few EPP programs that require for, for elementary licensure, you go ahead and get dual licensed in exceptional children's. And, and so this is a really important thing that we need to look at and think about because our elementary teachers, there's quite a bit of support needed in, in our elementary schools for exceptional children services. And the more overlap we would have, the more services we would be able to provide. The next thing I want to point out is the, is the, is the dip in license holders once you get past ELA. When you hit mathematics and science, we're down to just a little over 10% of our, our teaching force has a license in math or science. And then, where languages is small as well. This is more about opportunity. If the focus is, you know, quite a lot of our focus is on what we call the core. And if you look at mathematics, science, and social studies, those are, are well below our ELA levels of, of license holders. The next slide is routes to licensure for CPL and initially licensed teachers. So we looked at our, everybody in the state who has an active CPL, and you can see there are about 22, 224,000 of those. Just to let, remind you of our current teaching force is around 97,000. So, there are many more license holders than we have positions existing out there, but clearly they're not all employed. Now, we break that down, how many of those, and this is just the CPL population, so your more experienced teachers. The traditional route accounts for 57% of those who hold a CPL. Alternative route, what would have been lateral entry and now residency, accounts for 9.3%. So right there, you're starting to see that, that alternative route is not making it through the conversion process and persisting with holding those licenses, converting and holding those licenses at the same rate as, as our traditionally prepared folks. And then out of state represents about 30% of our CPL license holders. I think of note there is CTE, is very small among our, our CPL population. Now we move to the initial license. So these are all the areas of initial, these people still hold an IPL, and you can see that's 39,000. The traditional route makes up 27% of that. So what you're seeing here is the established group of teachers predominantly hold a, have gone through the traditional pathways. But the new stream that's coming in is much more diverse in their pathway. And about 27.8% of them have gone through a traditional route, 19.1, the alternative, and 28.6 from out of state. And so, this is, I'm illustrating this to point out the diversity of the pathway, but the stable population of CPL still looks like the traditional route path. And that's, that's a strong indicator to me, especially on the alternative route, that they're not persisting in the same way. And, and we need to understand that leak in the pipeline and what's causing that leakage. I want to take a moment to ask, make a request of all Board members. Under the non-continuing professional license, there is a category, permit to teach, emergency license. That number is 3,660. If you could write this down, because I'm going to refer back to this number in the notes, in a, in a future presentation, future meaning in a few minutes. And I want you to, to see that number and be able to reference that number in relation to something else I'm going to show you a little later. The other question I was asked is what is the potential impact of the pathways model on these license routes and the licenses themselves? I want to be very clear that I'm speaking from my understanding of the ongoing process of the pathways model and the way I'm perceiving that model would have an impact on the way we currently do licensure. So presumably, the new licensure structure in the pathways models would eliminate the need for all existing licensure categories. We would no longer say you have an emergency license, or you have a permit to teach, or you have a limited license. We say you are in this, based on your skill and competency that you've demonstrated, you are at this level, with the idea that you will progress regardless of your preparation route or regardless of how you got into the system. Teachers would enter at whatever level their demonstrated skill indicated, and they would progress as they acquire those competencies and skills. And then finally, the, the greatest impact on this would be, if we could scroll on just a little bit, teachers would have multiple avenues for demonstrating those competencies. Currently, there is one standardized testing. That is the only way you can move in our licensure system currently, and that is passing the praxis exam and the ADTPA.
Are there any questions or comments? The point that you made about the persistence of, it appears to be a problem, the persistence of candidates going through the alternative route. So when I'm hearing you, when I heard that and I'm thinking about it, there, to me, there's some implications based on that one thought for the pathways to excellence, because we're probably going to have, we hope that we're going to have a good number of candidates working, the teachers working through those different levels. But in that population, we're probably going to have to do something extra special to keep those candidates, those teachers really near and dear and loving the profession. Because I'm hearing just on the, the notion of the persistence level wanes, and it's clear with those that come into the profession on, through the alternative route, because I do think that we will have a lot of, a high percentage of that type of teacher in the pipeline. So it just speaks volumes about what we're going to have to do to support teachers once we're moving through the, those various levels. Anything else caught your fancy, caught your attention? The fact that we don't seem to have sufficient numbers, ample numbers now, or we can't predict the future when it comes to our math teachers and our science teachers, those percentages were rather low in terms of active license holders. I think it was about maybe 9% in the mathematics area, maybe something close to that in the sciences. Predominant, the elementary education major is the major, very prevalent in the active license holder.
And that makes sense, because we have far more elementary schools than we do middle schools and high schools. But the question remains, and this comes up a lot when we're, when we're talking about vacancies, we don't have a good idea of what the total number of elementary teachers we need and whether what we're seeing here is sufficient. It's, it's a big part, but is that big part big enough for the, for the requirements of the field?
Right. I saw a hand.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Well, one of the things that I was pleased to see was the, some alternatives to the standardized, standardized testing, because I've had new teachers or people struggling to pass the test, but they had every skill and the attitudes and the rapport would excuse everything you would want, and they're still struggling to pass that test. And I often said, I wish there was some way I could get that approved, otherwise, and hopefully we're going to have that.
Hopefully.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Tom, help me with some things, too. All these acronyms, RLL, LLL.
I'm sorry.
Let me go back down there. Intend to correct me if I'm wrong.
Sure.
There, lateral entry is no more.
That is correct.
Then is residence.
That is correct.
Okay. I'm a teacher, and I started out and had to take coursework and everything, and had three years, I think, to do it.
Yes.
Okay. Well, for whatever reason, I didn't, well, I passed it, I passed all my coursework. My license expired June 30th of this year. I passed all my coursework and all that done, but that standardized test, I have yet to pass it. And if I don't pass it, then I don't have a license.
That is correct.
If you don't have a license, then you can't be paid as a teacher.
That is correct.
Do I have any options at that point?
Yes.
You become employed.
You have, provided the employer sees you, agrees with you that you are an effective teacher, then you would have the option of the limited license for three years.
A limited license for three years.
That is correct.
Okay.
The, the, the condition of that is that you stay employed with that school district.
The LEA.
Yes, the LEA or the charter school.
Charter school.
Until you pass those tests.
So you keep going where else?
That's right.
Okay. Is that clearly, particularly to that being, somebody don't know that?
I would say, given the fact that we present a high volume of these limited license to you every month, would suggest that the districts are aware of this. And we do have monthly HR webinars. We will have it immediately after the board meeting, where we cover all the, these issues that we present to you with the HR directors, as well as to, much to their great frustration, we, every month, we reiterate the process for obtaining a limited license. So I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a lack of communication that this, this license exists. I know there are some districts that will not issue them, just by policy.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'm aware of the list that we see.
Yeah.
And I'm saying, how come, in my mind, how come you don't know this? Because I see this list about every month. Okay, I got.
You being the LEAs or you being me?
Me.
Oh, you, okay.
Now, with that being said, thank you for that.
Yes.
You have clarified that for me. What is it with the music test? I'm hearing more and more, yeah, that's, I mean, I'm hearing from people more and more now about how hard it is. People who have, been in this 20 years, or 10 years, but the tests that they take. And we're losing.
We, we do know that the, that the, the music test is very difficult. We have, I mean, it is certainly within the Board's authority to recommend DPI to look into alternatives to that test. We can get you information on the pass rates for that test. I would defer to my, Dr. Seiberg is a former music teacher, and he probably has, he has firsthand experience with that, with that praxis exam, but he has communicated that it is a very difficult test. If, is, but, you know, from my perspective, music is a very difficult thing. So I, you know, I, I don't know if we, if it's a matter of we need to change the test or if it's just, it's, it is a very difficult music theory and is very difficult subject area.
Well, those eight, no, eight, no, four notes. I'm all about that, too. Fascinating.
I'd say it's all Greek to me, but I understand Greek a whole lot better.
Yeah, it's all like that, yeah. But, but with that being said, though, did I hear you clearly saying that we are looking into options of just the tests in some way?
So the pathways models that was, that was, that was referenced in this presentation would provide teachers with other opportunities to show their competency to hold the license than simple standardized testing. I shouldn't have inserted the adjective "simple" because the testing is not simple, other than standardized testing.
All right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You're welcome. If there are no other questions or comments, we have two very massive reports that we need to move along this portion of the meeting so that we can get to those reports. If you have questions, just jot them down, and we can, Dr. Tom Berlino on the side later. So you may proceed.
So as you know, annually, the Board is required to submit a report to the JLEC on the state of the teaching profession, which looks at issues of teacher attrition and vacancy rates across the state. This year's report, we're bringing to you, this is a draft report that we're bringing to you for discussion, with the hopes that you will receive it at next month's meeting. So first, employment attrition and mobility. I'm giving you, of course, this report is fairly long, but I'm giving you the, what I think are the highlights from this, but feel free to ask any questions, other questions that you might, might have as we have this discussion. So we go back to 2018, 19, and look at the total number of employees across the state in those years, and you can see that it's a pretty stable number hovering around 94,000, what we consider teachers. And then the, the attrition rate across the state for those four years. You can see, if you recall, back in 2021, there was a slight rise in attrition, up to 8.2%. This year, our analysis shows that that is kind of back down to pre-pandemic levels that we saw around 7.5%, roughly equivalent. So the, again, my, my report to you, the Board, is that attrition in the state of North Carolina is one of the most stable metrics that we have. It is annually right around the same number every year. Mobility has moved around a little bit, and of course, we expected, with the pandemic, we did expect some drop in the mobility rate. It was much more difficult for people to move from area to area, so you did see that drop down to about 3.24%. In 21, 22, it's up a tick to 3.31, not seeing much difference there as we return. Of course, what's really important here is when you think about attrition and you think about mobility from the perspective of a PSU, both those things mean a loss to that district. That both those things together constitute the total departure from that LEA. This report is in no way to suggest, the statewide average is in no way to suggest that all districts experience these two variables exactly the same way. There is wide variation across the state in how this is affecting individual districts. So this is just to show you the attrition rates across time, and what we've done is we say, what's the, you know, if we go back to 20, I think, 2016 here, and move forward, what's that average up until this point? And then on the far right, you see this year's estimate, the average attrition rate, and it's well what we would expect within the range of reasonable averages, given what we've had historically. So those of you who are familiar with the idea of a confidence interval, anything that doesn't fall in that black line, if, if it went above it or below it, we would say, wow, there's a significant change to attrition in the state, either positively or negatively. As long as it's staying within that black line, we say that's consistent with what we've seen in the past, that's consistent with average. And you can see this year's estimate is well within that average. Same thing for the mobility rates. What we can say is that this is a fairly low rate compared to what we've seen on average, but it's still within that margin of what we would expect as the statewide average. Every year, we show you attrition by years of experience, so this is to help us understand what the relationship between a teacher's tenure in the state is versus, no, I'm sorry, tenure was a poor choice of words, how long they've been employed in the state and how, what the relationship between their attrition is. As you can see, in the early years, attrition is very high. In the past, when I've shown you this chart, you see what I always refer to as a classic U shape. You see it go up really high on the end. This one is a little different, and on the right-hand side, you are not seeing that really high attrition. Usually, that starts around year twenty-five and goes per, you go sharply up as you move forward. This one is a lot more flat, and, and I think the, um, reason codes illustrate that, uh, full retirement for teachers is down a little bit than what we've seen over the years. So you're not seeing that, you're not seeing the right-hand side of that U shape, um, go up as much as we've seen in the past. Attrition by teacher category, so we look at the, uh, experienced licensed teachers. These are teachers with three or more years of experience. They have a, an attrition rate of six point nine percent. But I want to direct your attention to beginning teachers, and that's why it's highlighted. Our beginning teachers have almost double the attrition rate of our experienced teachers. My fear is that we are not taking good enough care of our beginning teachers to ensure that they will persist in the profession, and this attrition rate is, um, is particularly problematic for the future of the pipeline. If we, we, we know that we're going to have to replace retiring teachers, and if the, if the beginning teachers are leaving at higher rates than the retiring teachers, then that poses a problem for the future. Attrition by reason code, and so you can see here, we just lay out for you that, uh, there are three major categories here. Personal reasons, uh, these include things like, um, my family's relocating, um, there's not a whole lot you can do about that, or I've decided to change careers. There is, uh, that is a, a fairly large, um, percentage historically that has come down somewhat uh, in this year, and then initiated by LEA. This is, the LEA has said, um, we, we, you know, we prefer you resign, um, or dismissal. Uh, those numbers are always very low, uh, and then you have beyond control of the LEA, like retirement is one of those. And, um, and even that, that, that one has come down, uh, from what we've seen in the past. Other reasons is a much bigger category this year, and, um, these are reasons that just don't fall into any of these buckets. Um, sometimes the districts will explain what those are, and sometimes they won't. Uh, this is the, by the regions, and, um, and what we've done here is provided, the third column shows you the percent, uh, attrition by region for this year, and then we put next to that what that attrition was in the prior year. And so you can see that North Central is up a little bit, um, which historically, they have defined the average when it comes to tradit, uh, attrition. Uh, but, uh, this year, they are up a little bit above, uh, the mean, um, and, uh, Piedmont Triad as well. Um, I do want to point out the Sand Hills, um, is up just a little bit, um, but that's one we particularly pay attention to. Um, attrition seems to be, um, much more of an issue for the Sand Hills, and they don't seem to have experienced a great jump this year. Vacancy rates. So every year, as part of this report, we collect vacancy rates, um, across the state. Um, the law requires that we report vacancies on the fortieth school day, instructional day. Uh, we also collect the data on the first, so what we really want to highlight, uh, for folks is the hard work that LEAs do from the first day in their vacancies to the fortieth day, and how they're working to bring those vacancies down. It's not as simple as that, though, because these vacancies are not necessarily the same positions measured on the first day as the fortieth day. This, there's churn within that, so they have a position filled, and on the twentieth day, they find out that person's no longer going to be working. So, um, it's, it's an ever-evolving metric that we try our best to keep, to wrap our arms around. So we do know this year that on the first day, uh, there was a five point nine percent vacancy rate across the state, and on the fortieth day, that had come down a bit to five thousand ninety-one and about a half, uh, these are measured in FTE, so that's why the half, uh, the decimals are there. Um, and we give you the, the rates that were before. So the first day, um, current year to the first day last year represents about a forty-six percent increase in the vacancy rates across the state. And in the second, um, from the fortieth day, uh, this year to last year, that represents about a fifty-eight percent increase in the vacancy rate. Now, I want to be, the next slide, I want to be very clear about what this represents. So, General Statute one fifteen C dash two ninety-nine point five. This was, um, put into, uh, statute, uh, I think a couple of years ago. But what we've been doing with, with our schools is really, uh, being, uh, prescriptive in how we measure vacancies, and it has to follow the law. We've been working with our districts to really understand what the law says about this. And there were these changes that were made, and so the methodology that we currently use is a position is counted as vacant if the position is not filled by a licensed teacher in a permanent assignment. So if you hire a retiree, that is not a permanent assignment. By definition, they are not coming out of retirement, it's not a permanent assignment. All your retirees are counted as vacancies. Is filled by a long-term sub or an interim teacher. Even if you hired somebody to take the role for the entire year, and it's not a permanent placement, that is a vacancy. The position is filled by a teacher with an emergency license, permit to teach, or provisional license. So now, this is where I want to go back to the number you wrote down. Mr. Blackburn, I think you have the number?
Thirty-six sixty.
Thirty-six sixty. So those, if you hold a permit to teach or an emergency license or a provisional license, by definition, you are employed. If three thousand six hundred and sixty teachers that are employed in this year are contributing to the vacancy rate, that vacancy rate, when we talk about, is there a person in the classroom? Yes, that person doesn't meet the definition of a permanent position. And so that's how we need to think about this vacancy rate. Uh, the vacancy rate tells us to what extent the districts are filling their positions with permanent placements. And anything temporary is being counted as a vacancy, not for the purposes of belittling or disparaging those districts, but understanding what their human capital needs are. And, um, I think it's very unfortunate that this may be construed as there's this massive increase in, in the number of vacancies across the state. What has changed is we've enforced the methodology that's prescribed in law so that we are accurately reporting to the General Assembly the state of our teaching profession in, in this annual report. Uh, we also have vacancies by subject area, um, and again, you can see here that the, um, the predominant, um, category is the core, uh, in K five. So this is just an elementary licensed teacher, basically. One thousand two hundred and twenty-three. Um, I want to go back to the statement originally. This is a large number, but what does it represent in the percentage of total positions there are out there? So that's a very important thing, we don't have good data on that. Um, but, so, in the absence of that, we just have to report to you the magnitude of those numbers. But the core, um, definite, uh, elementary education is a concern. That number is a high number, uh, as well as exceptional children. Uh, I, I do want to point out that, that support services, those are not like, uh, school counselors and things like that. Those are people that are paid on the teacher scale, as, they're paid as teachers, but they may be doing things like instructional facilitator, uh, literacy facilitator, those, those roles, um, to support. Those have popped up in, those, those are roles, not necessarily licenses, but they do represent vacancies across the state. The reason this, this, uh, data collection is important, this informs our federal reporting and hard-to-staff subjects and areas. Folks going into, um, areas that we identify as hard to staff, that unlocks federal funds for their preparation, um, and, and so this is a very important metric that we need to get to the, uh, the federal government. And that's the highlights.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments? Very important data, if you think about the first report, um, changes to LICN zero, zero, one. Um, the data that is in that report combined with this information, just chock full of information. We have another report coming, uh, after Dr. Tomberlin leaves the mic. We have, we're going to hear from Dr. Seiberg on the, um, Ed, the EPP Education, Educator Preparation Program Annual Report. So we're getting that in just a second or two. I do see a hand, yes.
Believe me, I can do it quickly, I think.
Okay, I know you can.
It's kind of alarming that beginning teachers have such a high attrition rate. Is there any information on any systems that seem to be doing much better in retaining them than others? And if so, what kind of support or programs are they providing?
So that's a great question. Um, we can certainly, uh, disaggregate that, that beginning teacher rate by LEA. So I think what you're asking is, are there certain LEAs that have better beginning teacher attrition than other LEAs? And we could work on that and, and certainly bring it to the board next month as part of this, um, analysis.
Thank you so much for that offer. Superintendent Truitt, then we have Ms. Camet and, uh, Judge Chair Duncan.
Thank you, Dr. Oxenden. Thank you, Dr. Tomberlin, for making this very difficult subject so clear. I, I think to piggyback off of, um, our advisor's comments, beginning teacher's attrition has been in double digits for a long time.
Yes, ma'am.
It did decrease during the first year of the pandemic, and now it's, it's back up. And I would be remiss if I didn't remind board members that our pathways work. Part of its goal is to provide the support that our beginning teachers need. We have to do a better job in supporting our beginning teachers. They, they don't get enough time in the classroom while they are in their EPP to just, um, fly by the seat of their pants when they have their own classroom for those, those first couple of years. They need to have, um, targeted, better supports, and it needs to come from within their building. And that is one of the reasons that I've been so excited about pathways from the beginning, because as has been stated many times, the pathways plan is about improving the educational experience for our students, and part of the way we do that is by ensuring that our teachers, but especially our, um, our least experienced teachers have what they need.
Absolutely, thank you, and Ms. Camet.
So just to piggyback on that, so the, 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 um, the, the loss of beginning teachers has, has not, that hasn't changed precipitously? Is that what I'm, I'm understanding to be correct?
There was, there was a dip during the COVID years. It, it was down around eleven percent, I think, last year. Um, but we're seeing, it's been as high as fifteen, um, percent in some of these reports. So, um, it, it looks, I mean, it's, it's hard to tell from one year whether we're moving back to that original, um, level, or if this is, you know, we don't have enough information to say it's a trend.
So obviously, whether it's up or down, that's part of our problem statewide, that, that in terms of the people coming into the profession. Well, I guess that's going to be what Andy talks about next in the EPPs, and how that also is.
Okay, I, I. There, there's a little dovetail going on there, definitely. Um, Judge Chair Duncan?
Well, without delving into dovetail, um.
Sorry.
You, no, you use the terminology, there's not a massive change, and I think you then explained why it's not a massive change by filling in some of the additional information, but I think we'd have to concede there is some change.
Which metric are you referring to, I'm sorry?
Well, you said massive change with respect to the five thousand some positions, and then you explained some of those positions, how the vacancies were accounted for.
Oh, the vacancy rates, yes, sir, okay.
And so, then we have to, I think we'd have to concede there is some change going on, and, and the really important question to ask here, I think, is, does this feel like the canary in the mine situation? And I think there has been some sense that generally, that the teaching profession has, uh, not been as attractive to some of the great candidates that it has historically been in more recent years. And I think it is fair to say that we're, we, we could be seeing that taking on greater proportion. And this is a time, when, I think it's a pretty critical time, when we support our educators in the strongest possible way, starting with professional respect, and moving towards income, uh, changes in terms of how they are viewed, in the most important job we have, which is to help with the education of our young people, prepare them for a productive life. And I, I don't think this is anything other than a pretty important time to note that. I appreciate the superintendent's comments about the pathways as meant to work, as meant to try to address this in recognition of this issue. And I think it's very important to get some explanations around the details that you have provided to us, but I also think it's very important for us not to think we should have a high level of comfort about where we are.
Oh, I, I, and I, I hope I did not communicate that message.
I did suggest, yeah, but I, 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 I think it's important to provide context and framework, which you did, I also think it's important not to lose the message.
Sure.
Yes, Dr. Ford.
Hey, Dr. Tomberlin, thank you again for presenting this, I know it's difficult. Um, lots of nuance here, but I wanted to look at slide number three really quickly, the employment attrition and mobility. And with respect to attrition and mobility, I understand the rates there, but if I'm understanding this correctly, in terms of the total number of employees, the one thing that has been consistent is that that raw number is going down. Is that accurate?
It, it is, um, and I, I, I think there's been some, some questions raised about, you know, is, are the number of FTEs in the state, is that contracting or expanding? Um, this would, we, we look at all funding sources here, so we're not looking only at the state. Um, it could be that districts, I, I can't tell you which funding stream is, is, is losing ground. Is it the state, is it the federal, or is it local? Um, we could certainly look into that, um, if that's of interest to the board.
Yeah, I, I was just going to ask you to venture a guess on what you thought might have been, uh, causing that, but that's probably not useful, but, so the overall number of employees is trending downward, and this is likely happening relative to the student population is probably trending upward?
I would not say they're inversely related, no. I would say that they're directly correlated, so the number of positions at the state is determined by ADM, so as ADM goes up, so would the allotments, the, the state allotment for teaching, and I don't want to, I don't want to get out of my lane on this. But, um, that's my understa, that's my simplistic understanding of how that works.
I appreciate you clarifying, I was just hoping that we weren't having fewer employees with more students, but.
I don't.
That gets into funding models, which I don't want to talk about today, that's not funny, so.
I'm glad we're having a really good discussion, it's a very important one, but we do need to move along.
Thank you.
And, uh, next will be Dr. Seiberg's report on the annual report from our EPPs. This is another report that we can, in our minds, we can connect with the other core data that we've studied and sold today.
Good afternoon, board members. So today, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about, uh, the Educator Preparation Program, uh, annual reports. On the first slide here, this is just a, a quick, uh, nod to the law. Um, it's, it's required in law that we provide a variety of metrics associated with educator preparation programs, um, and what they're doing out in the field. And, uh, this, this, these data are prepared about the same time as the State of the Teaching Profession report, and incidentally, both of them are required in December. You'll notice that we're not in December anymore. Um, and we always ask for an extension because we have, we, there are metrics that we don't get until well after we're able to, uh, to meet that deadline. So that's why, uh, Dr. Tomberlin and my reports are showing up, uh, in February. So, uh, on the next slide here, you'll see, um, what we do is we take these data, and we've, um, over the past couple of years, we've converted from static documentation into an interactive series of dashboards. Um, so both the Educator Preparation Program, uh, performance reports, in terms of the static reports that we've done over prior years, and the interactive dashboards are on that link that's in the, the PowerPoint, uh, so you can go on our website and peruse that at your leisure. So you can go on our website and peruse that at your leisure. The purpose of having these set up in the interactive dashboard system mechanism is so that you can navigate and slice the data in whatever means you see fit to help you think about the various aspects of data that you want to focus on. So this gives us a lot more, a sort of a telescopic lens, and a lot more depth to looking at the data. And it's much more efficient for you all and folks out in the field to look at what they want to look at specifically as opposed to, you know, thousands of pages of static documents. So on this slide here, you'll see these are the various dashboards that have been built. Many of these have been in place for a couple of years now. Many thanks to Dr. Andy Baxter, who's sort of the mind behind all the conversion of the static documents into interactive dashboards. It takes a lot of work to put together. So many thanks to him on all these data. And a variety of these data are provided, again, to directly respond to what is an obligation to report on in law. So a little bit about some new reporting features. Right now, in front of you, you'll have, if you go to that website, you'll be able to look at all the existing dashboards. Now have the 21, 22 years' worth of data included on them. These are longitudinal dashboards, so you can look at data over time. We're also in the process of building some additional features into the dashboard to improve its interactivity. One is the narrative responses. In other words, there are some questions that are posed in the law around how educator preparation programs support training teachers in a variety of subjects. So for example, they might ask a question like, can you share how your ed prep program is supporting teachers in their development to work with children with special needs? That is not something that would have a number associated with it, it would be a couple paragraphs. So those narrative reports are the last component that we're in the process of putting up on our dashboards. So you'll be able to essentially grab everything from the interactive dashboard and rendering the old school static dashboards moot going forward. The second thing I'm really thrilled about, and so are some colleagues in the room here, is the, this idea of the user-driven ad hoc analyses capability. So a lot of times, the national accreditation requirements require the ed prep programs to cut data in very unique ways and very specific ways. And this enables the user, in this case, the deans and program leads, to be able to go into the dashboards and pull the data exactly the way they need it so that they can provide really granular level detail to support their national accreditation, either their renewal or their efforts to gain national accreditation. So this allows us two things. It frees up our team so that more of the, more of this work can get done out in the field and not be ad hoc directly on us. And the second is, it again allows a much more granular level of detail for the various stakeholders to really dig into their data and think about, you know, how this is impacting their program and some of their outcomes. So that is also, I know we have that listed as going to be ready in March. That's actually ready now, so we've turned the lights on that as well. So the last thing we're just waiting on over the next week or two is to get the narrative responses in place. So when we do these reports, and we've done these every year, at least since I've been here, we like to share a couple of notable state trends, and I want to share those with you now. If you're looking at the slide here on the top left, we want to take a look first at candidate satisfaction. We collect candidate satisfaction. Another term is recent graduate survey. Basically, we survey folks who are just recently program complete, from whatever program that they're in. And you'll see since 2016, we see a very slight decline that has continued on all the way through to our current year's worth of data. And what they're looking at there is the average candidate reported being well or very well-prepared on 67% of the teaching skills covered in the survey. So the survey asks a whole variety of preparation areas for candidates to reflect on. And in general, about two-thirds are saying they are well or very well-prepared. And that is a nine percentage point decline since 2016. On the top right there, you'll see the employer satisfaction. We also ask of the folks that are coming into the profession, we also ask principals who are managing those folks out in the field, an employer satisfaction survey. And again, this is to provide sort of a 360 lens of the ed prep program and how it's doing as perceived by the people who are receiving it and the people who are gaining, getting the graduates from their programs. And you'll see that's very stable over the tenure that we've been looking at over the years. The bottom left is teaching performance. That has to do with NSES, and that's remained relatively stable. And in the bottom right, you'll see student growth, and we're using EVA's data associated with that. And that, for the most part, has remained relatively stable. So that's some overarching notable state trends. But I want to look more closely at admissions and enrollment in this next section here because there's some data that you'll find compelling. On this slide here, you'll see we're looking at annual new enrollment data from 2014 to 2022. And in here, you'll see that these, this population that we're looking at are candidates that are pursuing degrees or programs that lead only to an initial license. So that would be undergraduate folks that are pursuing an undergraduate degree in teaching or a master's program that leads to initial licensure or the licensure-only route, which would be those residency folks, the alternative route. So that's the population we're looking at. And if you look at the far right here, my narrative speaking there is sort of covering it up a little bit. But if you look between '21 and '22, which is the far right, we'll see that new enrollments fell 42% from 2021 to 2022. And these are, that number of 4,941, we really haven't seen that since about 2017. When we look all the way back to 2014, that represents a 28% decline from the numbers that we were seeing back in 2014. So obviously, this was alarming to us out of the gate. So the first thing that we did was we wanted to look at it, disaggregate the data a variety of other ways to see if there were some more noteworthy findings within the overarching area. And long story short, we did every subgroup analysis we could. We looked at gender, race, ethnicity, EPP type, all these different ways of looking at it. And all of those areas are down. And I'm going to share a couple of more disaggregated data on the next two slides here just to further help you understand the context. This slide, we're looking at breaking down the new enrollment by route. So on the left, we have the traditional route. Those are folks that are going into college and they're going to study to be an educator, coming out with their undergraduate completed. The second is, on the right, is the alternative. And the alternative, you can think about that as the residency. So that's a person that already has an undergraduate degree. They don't want a whole degree, they just need to be adequately prepared to be an effective teacher in the classroom. And so there's this alternative pathway. When we look at those two separately from the overall, both of these areas experienced declines from '21 to '22. For the traditional route on the left, the decline is about three times as pronounced as the alternative route, or 55% compared to 17% of the alternative route from '21 to '22. And if we look across the time period, the alternative route is up 63% since we recorded it back in 2014. And a likely cause of that is the Session Law 2017-189, which is the old 599. And the 599 enabled for-profit entities and entities outside of North Carolina to enter the state to become educator preparation programs. So we're thinking that some of that increase is likely due to the enabling of this larger pool to enter the competitive space in North Carolina. Lastly, it's noteworthy to see that the raw number in 2022 for the traditional route of new enrollments is roughly the same as the alternative route. Usually, in the past, the traditional route has been much higher than the alternative route. So we're seeing a large shift from the traditionally prepared, the number of folks entering the traditionally-prepared program relative to the alternative. The next slide, you'll see we've disaggregated it again. This time, we're looking at this new enrollment by license area. And I'm going to help you across the top here, just for space, we've abbreviated things. But the first on the left, we see elementary, then secondary, special subjects, exceptional children, middle grades, and CTE. And you'll see across all of those disaggregations, we see similar declines across all the licensure areas. The one caveat, and if you can slide that down enough, you can see the little blue on the far right there. That CTE, that blue is indicating that the 285 count for CTE, despite being down 20% from last year, is still a small increase from 2014. That's why that's a different color. So obviously, this decline is going to have impacts on the broader teacher pipeline. And for this part of the discussion, let me hand it back to Dr. Tomberlin to share some thinking about the broader implications as we think about the pipeline at large.
So certainly, this is a concern. And I just want to clarify how this enrollment interacts with the pipeline. So if we go to the next slide. So one of the things I want to talk about first is this, the pathway into the profession through the traditional route. So what we know about admissions is about 86% of those that are admitted to the program will complete. This is historical data, so we're using these to predict what will happen with this cohort. So we have a new cohort in '21, '22 that's down to about roughly 2,700. And so what's of real interest is, how many can we expect them to come out into employment in North Carolina public schools? And so to look at that, we would go back to this kind of model, which we've shown you before. And we know that about 55% of those who enter the profession, who enter a traditional EPP route will become, will come into employment the first year after they, after they complete that program. So that's a little more dire than I like to present to you. But when you look at that enrollment of, when you look at that enrollment of 2,478, a little more than half of those will be, will be entering the profession by our estimates after they complete that program. Next slide. And this is the alternate pathway, of course. When they enter a residency license, they are 100% employed. So it's, we can't look at it the same way. But of those, so they're all employed, but of those, only 76%, I'm sorry if I'm straining to, I think that's 76 or 78, 78% complete that program. And then how many of them continue in teaching after that first year? Well, that's 59%. And so we still, we can't look at, I mean, this is, this is a drop, yes. But we also have to operationalize this. And how many teachers can we expect to be entering the profession and be available for employment for our districts, knowing that our attrition rate is going to remain stable? So the next slide. So cohorts don't enter the profession uniformly, that's what we do know. So we know these folks have enrolled in the '21, '22 school year. So this was, this, so they had their first year, they're in their second year. What the assumption is, is they're all going to be done at the end of this year and be ready for employment in the next year. But that's not what happens. Like most undergraduates, these folks are coming out into their fifth year, so their third year in a traditional program. So what we would expect is, in '23, '24, you're not going to see the immediate impact of this drop in enrollment. What you will see, and Dr. Peter Martin, if we could go back just to the overall graph that shows historical enrollment, one of the first ones you presented for him. This one right, I'm sorry, next one? This one right here. So what you see in 2021 is a real spike in enrollment. So those people have, in '23, '24, will be completing their third year. Those are the people we're expecting to come into the profession in the '23, '24 year en masse. The largest percentage of that cohort is going to enter in the '23, '24, in '23, '24 school year. And so in this next year, we should appreciate that increase in enrollment in our North Carolina public schools as far as recruitment. It is the '24, '25 school year that this enrollment is going to have the greatest impact, and we're going to feel that impact. It is important that we say this to the board and in a public forum because the districts need to be aware that in the '24, '25 school year, the availability of traditionally-prepared teachers is going to be lower than they've seen in the past. That means they may need to focus on greater recruitment efforts on out-of-state teachers and bringing teachers who have bachelor's degree that are thinking about the profession, try to get those more in and get them into the residency license program. We don't have, we don't have any impact over enrollment in an EPP, in the traditional pathway. What we have impact on is perhaps our principals in their communities recognizing people that might want to pursue teaching, that have their bachelor's degrees, getting them into residency license programs. Districts may need to redouble their efforts in advertising North Carolina. In other states, leveraging our NCTCH to make sure that we're broadly advertising North Carolina, North Carolina positions across the entire state. I, I think what we need to understand is that the effect of this is serious. This is a serious finding that we're presenting to you. And I hope we've done it in sufficient time that we can try to manage the impact of what this loss of enrollment will mean for the '24, '25 school year.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to, I know we're running low on time, but this is really timely, startling, timely. I'm thinking that maybe Chair Davis, at some point, maybe our next planning meetings or in the fall when we plan again, that we devote more solid time or targeted time to the information that has been put before us in these two reports and get a handle on, you know, perhaps hearing from our deans of our schools of education, colleges of education to find out their thoughts and their strategic thinking around recruitment efforts. It seems like that from one of the frames that Tom or either Andrew may have shared, the alternative route is equal to the traditional route. But yet, at the same time, if you go back to a previous 15 minutes ago presentation, it is that the beginning teacher who is coming to us through an alternative route is not persisting. So that is the target group that we need to be mindful of in our schools of education, our colleges of education, our faculty, and others, other stakeholders who have a stake in this. And we all do, just need to be concerned about this. Because it's giving us like a harbinger of things to come in the educator, in the teacher education world and in the teaching profession. So I thank you for all the hard work that you have invested in these two reports. And tomorrow, Chair Davis, we will take action on ESMP 1. And next month, in March, we will come back with action on the State of the Teaching Report and then the EPP report. And that concludes my portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Oxdenine. Any comments concerning this last report before we, yes, sir?
Without going through a laundry list, the, and it's beyond anybody's control in here, probably. But if the state legislature would take actions to show more appreciation of teachers, I think we would be better off. Because people that are interested need to feel like they have a good future in education. And there's been some things occurred in the past years that almost discourage it or make it less attractive. And without going through all those, that's just a general comment, I think. And that, we, but we still need to do the best we can do with what we have to work with to make things work, no matter who else, whose fault it is.
That's right.
So, but I just. So, but I just felt compelled to put that too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Oxdenine. I must echo Mr. Mercer's comments. I do think we impact enrollment. I think we have a responsibility to impact enrollment, and we do that by making teaching an attractive, worthy profession for North Carolina students. And I think we've just been given a one-year reprieve. The 2021 spike is just giving us a little, a little time. If we don't turn around this trend, it, we face serious consequences in our K-12 education system. And the time is now to turn around that trend and do that by committing ourselves, along with our colleagues in General Assembly and the Governor's Office, to make the profession of teaching a worthy endeavor that North Carolina students want to get into, and even more that their parents want them to get into. That's the trend we must reverse. So thank you for highlighting that, Dr. Oxdenine.
Thank you.
Well, now turn to the Strategic Planning Committee led by Dr. James Ford. Dr. Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am James E. Ford. I have the privilege of serving as the Chair of the Strategic Planning Committee alongside my colleague Joe Camnitz. And today, we'll be hearing a follow-up from the conversation from last month, specifically, we'll be hearing feedback germane to goal revisions and objective revisions specifically around the data collection and availability of data coming from the NCDPI work group. And so Dr. Petrie Martin will be presenting this information for us in the discussion.
Greetings to our State Board members, our superintendent, our advisors, and all those assembled. First of all, I would like to thank my partners in this work, Dr. Corn and Dr. Cohen Vogel, who have partnered with me in collecting all of the feedback that came from the work group that will be presented today. As you know, the three goals have not changed. The goals of eliminating the opportunity gaps for students and improving school and district performance and increasing educator preparedness to meet the needs of every child still remain the three goals for the State Board. When you go to the next slide, we want to highlight what we see are the key roles for the State Board's dashboard, which we know all of the questions that we have asked regarding the data was truly to inform the work of the dashboard. So we know that this could be useful to provide the State Board, as well as local school boards and other local and state policymakers with a tool to help with decision-making. We also know that we need to provide metrics that align with the State Board's comprehensive plan. We also know the dashboard can inform suggestions and decisions regarding the performance of and the conditions of our schools, and then to identify opportunities to collaborate and bring together a similar or related reporting, our schools, our districts, that certainly do this work across the state. As we worked with the work group, we discussed some of our main purposes for the revision. And again, in November, during the planning and work session, we had State Board members, we had advisors, we had NCDPI staff, and some of our local superintendents, who came together to take a look at the current objectives and components and give us feedback. So we know this revision process started then. So we're excited today to bring to you a few things on the agenda. First of all, I'll share some guardrails for the recommendations. Then I will go into all of the recommendations that we have, and then give you a brief overview of some possible next steps. Some of the guardrails for the recommendations, you will see alignment to current and future work here at NCDPI. You will see the use of current data sources. That was a big part of the work group, looking at everything and determining if we have data to support the objectives and the components. You will see collaboration across the agency. We were truly focused on outputs, not just inputs in, in the work, and then also looking at qualitative approaches and best practices and not just quantitative data. So with that being said, we will start looking at our recommendations. And just as a reminder, the next slide, which is in small print, but I wanted to get all of our outstanding work group members on one slide, so you could see all of the folks who contributed to this work today. When we were in Pembroke together, we looked at our plan, and we had things categorized by green, yellow, and red. If things were designated yellow, it meant that we had quantifiable data, and in part, we could operationalize that item, but it still needed some more work. If it was red, it basically told us we did not have the data, and also, we needed more work to operationalize that particular objective or that component. So when you go to Goal One, which is to eliminate opportunity gaps, we have six sets of recommendations for Goal One. The first goal or objective under Goal One was to decrease the number of exclusionary discipline practices by subgroup. Our recommendations from the work group, including maintaining the current quantitative measures, but possibly adding a component to Objective One that discussed the implementation of interventions to support positive student behaviors. And that would be an opportunity to incorporate some best practices or some qualitative data from some of our PSUs across the state who are doing work in this area. Also, we are suggesting that we incorporate the teacher working conditions data for managing student conduct and safety items, so that we have data coming from our teachers on this particular objective. For Objective Two, we have a set of recommendations in regards to climate measures, as well as school-based mental health professionals and healthy habits. First of all, we are recommending that Objective 1.2 read, improve school climate, and we remove the word "measures." And this was put in place because, in using the word "measures," we're not sure what those measures are. So with that being said, let's look at the teacher working conditions survey to identify some very specific school climate measures. It was also recommended that we take a look at the panorama of student survey questions regarding some possible climate measures. And then for Component 1.2.1, we are asking that it be changed to read, increase the number of school-based mental health professionals as defined in, in the statute. Before, it was very broad. We did not specify any definition for those positions, and now we're trying to make it more specific. Also, we're asking to use the data from the school mental health support personnel reports and the school mental health reports to support that particular component. And then finally, for Component 1.2.2, use youth risk behavior survey data to pinpoint any specific healthy habits to support that particular objective. If we go to Objective Three under Goal One, this is increasing the percentage of four-year-old children enrolled in our pre-K programs. We are simply asking that we maintain our current data and maintain the current verbiage, recognizing that the data is only available from DHHS. Okay? If we go to Objective Four under Goal One, this is decreasing the high school dropout rate, also looking at our average composite score on state mandated college entrance exams, and then also increasing access readiness and attainment for post-secondary opportunities. We are recommending that we maintain our current data sources, but we are asking to change the verbiage for 1.4.2 to read, that we are increasing access readiness and attainment, and we add the words credentials, remove the word apprenticeships, because apprenticeships are part of work-based learning. We are also asking to consider chronic absenteeism and significant disproportionality in special education as possible components of this Objective Four. For Objective Five, Goal One, this is decreasing the number of students taking remedial courses. We are asking that this objective be changed to read, increasing post-secondary enrollment, employment, and/or enlistment. This is in alignment with the school performance grade discussion that we had earlier, and we would use the National Clearinghouse and/or NC Tower data to support this particular objective. For Objective Six under Goal One, increasing the number of educators of color in schools across North Carolina, we are simply asking to use the DRIVE Task Force and the STRIDE Best NC data for this item. And that concludes all of our recommendations for Goal One. Not sure if you want me to pause in between each goal? Just go through all of them? Okay. For Goal Two, which is improving school and district performance, we have four sets of recommendations for this goal. For Objective One under Goal Two, which was stated, allocate financial, business, and technology resources according to state and federal laws and State Board of Education policies. We are asking to change this to read, increase the number of PSUs using financial, business, and technology resources according to state and federal laws and State Board of Education policies. And then we would use audit findings, DLMI data, which is looking at our digital resources in our PSUs, and then personnel data on certified CFOs in our school districts. And this could be a qualitative data process or a promising practice process to learn from our PSUs who are doing this work well. For Objective Seven and Component One under Goal Two, which deals with increasing the number of schools meeting or exceeding growth, and then also looking at the percentages of schools with charter-like flexibilities. We know we need to maintain the current data sources for this objective and component, but we would like to change it to read, increase the percentage of low-performing schools with direct, intensive, or strategic DPI support. And we gave examples of TSI, CSI, restart, CARES, those types of schools who are meeting or exceeding annual expected growth overall and by subgroup. For Goal Two, Objective Eight, which is increasing the number of charter schools meeting or exceeding academic, operational, and financial goals, our recommendation is to maintain the objective as printed and use the data from the annual performance framework in the charter school office to support this particular item. And then the last recommendation for Goal Two is under Objective Nine, which is increasing the number of qualified and well-prepared principals. Our recommendation is to change the wording to read, increase the number of highly effective principals based on growth data from standardized assessments and school performance grades, keeping in mind that there is work being done currently to revamp school performance grades. And also, we discuss considering adding a component under this objective regarding assistant principal pipeline as well. And that concludes all of the recommendations for Goal Number Two. And for Goal Three, increasing educator preparedness that meets the needs of every student. For this one, we have a set of four recommendations. The first one under Objective One, increasing the number of culturally relevant and equity-focused resources for educators. We feel that this could be supportive through qualitative data and promising practices where we actually talk to school districts who are doing this work well. And those things could be shared during the planning and work sessions that are held twice a year. Next, under Goal Three, we have Objective Two, increasing the number of mentors available to beginning educators. We are recommending that the language be changed to read, increase the number of supports for educators throughout their career, and this would align with the NC pathways efforts currently going on. We would also use the teacher working condition survey data in reference to teacher supports and get feedback from teachers. And then also, we know that our NCDPI, our regional educator facilitators, monitor mentor activities in each of our regions, and that could be a data source as well. Next, under Goal Three, we have Objective Three, and this is strengthening relationships between educator prep programs, districts, and schools to foster collaboration in beginning teacher practice. For this one, we are recommending that we consider the MOUs currently in place with the EPPs, and this could also be a qualitative and promising practices approach in which we learn from PSUs and educator prep programs who are doing this work well. And it's ironic, because that was just recommended a few minutes ago when we were having the EPP discussion. So we're in alignment there. For Goal Three, Objective Four, this is increasing opportunities for educator engagement inside and outside of the school. Our recommendation is to change this to read, increase school connections with the community, and then consider a teacher working conditions question regarding staff involvement in the community as our data source. So that concludes all of our recommendations for Goal One, Two, and Three. And our final recommendation is to take all of these goals and extend them through 2027 in light of the pandemic, in the 18 months to two years of the pandemic. Next steps would just be to get your feedback regarding the recommendations, also to ask for your support and approval. Then we would begin the revision of these objectives and components based on your feedback. Then we would disseminate that information, and then consider any advocacy, policy alignment, any possible legislation or potential practices that would need to be addressed with revised objectives and components. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Petrie Martin. Board members, any questions or discussion?
I do. Ford, I just have a quick, a question. I wonder, the Goal Three, on working closely, collaborating with our EPPs, if activities take place in a region, that would count towards satisfying that type of goal, right?
Yes. It would. So when it was mentioned earlier, I smiled at my seat, because it was definitely in alignment with the work group recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions, board members, or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Okay, so I believe this item then will be back before us next month.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. We'll now move to our Business Operations Discussion led by Vice Chair Duncan. Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes, thank you, Chair Davis. Along with my colleague, Wendell Hall, we lead the Business Operations Committee. We have several items for consideration this month. Our first item, BizOp One, is action on first reading, which involves approval of contracts over $500,000. Our first contract involves an annual school bus financing contract. Kevin Harrison will present this. I think it's important to note, and I'm going to ask Kevin to spend just more than the usual minute, he gets a two-minute warning, to discuss why the number is lower this year than it has been in other years, and why that's not necessarily going to stay static at a lower number for the financing. And then also, give additional 30 seconds to give us the monthly report on how we're doing on the gas reserve. Kevin?
Certainly. So we have a lower number for school bus replacement, because historically, we bought less buses 20 years ago. So there are less in that model year, and because the state of North Carolina has a specific replacement cycle in legislation, we need less buses this year, and also, less buses last year than we normally would utilize. So the request this year was only, for this contract, was only $50 million. That $50 million is lower than is traditional. We usually look at it about 70 million. But also, the price of buses, school buses, is up about 25%. So we are going to not only see a significant increase in need, because we're going to return to regular purchasing, we will also see a significant increase in need, because the cost of the vehicle is significantly higher. So we are only purchasing a few hundred buses this year. So we are only purchasing a few hundred buses this year. It will jump to more like 700 or so next year, and then 800 or 900 in the following years. Now, because this, of this contract, the impact is muted on the General Assembly's recurring budget because of this financing contract specifically. This financing contract spreads the payments out over four fiscal years, and because it spreads those payments out over four fiscal years, any procurement increase in one year shows its impact over multiple years, not all at once, which allows everybody to ramp up the money rather than go from 10 million to 80 million, okay? It allows the recurring expenditures to smooth. That is part of the reason why 20-some years ago, this contract process was envisioned. So this contract is for the financing of school buses. The school buses are replaced from state funds appropriated to DPI specifically for the purpose of replacing school transportation vehicles. So we're not, it's state public school fund money, this is not any DPI discretionary money, this is specific to the purpose. Our involvement is producing a single contract that can be bid, which is far more advantageous to the districts, also partially because we also sort of administrate and smooth the administration of the contract for the bidders as well. They have to deal with one person to pay on behalf of all the districts. They have all the contracts with all the districts, but they only have to deal with billing to one entity. That's very helpful to them, makes it easier. So we select the vehicles eligible for replacement, we collect the school districts' choices of which replacement vehicles, we authorize the purchase orders, we arrange for the financing, we approve requests to, the LEAs ask us to pay on their behalf as part of this financing contract, and then we do so upon receipt of the vehicles. We pay on their behalf and in subsequent years pay on their behalf as well. So we kind of just smooth the whole process out, and then we post the money to the LEA's books, so to speak, so that they can draw down their purchase orders in accordance with the payments.
So before we go to the gas reserves, three quick points.
Certainly.
The first one, the first one is that it's where you get to have a statement and a report that it's only $50 million. Sounds very impressive. Second of all, when it's only $80 million, next year, we'll all know why. Third, it's interesting that decisions made 20 years ago have ramifications 20 years later. So I thought it was worth us getting a deeper understanding of why the numbers are what they are this year. And very quickly, the gas reserve report, what we stand on there?
The gas reserves are looking good. The prices are moderating a little bit from those December numbers into the, back into that, that mid-threes range that we were hoping for. I think we, we have a little, we have a little bit of flexibility in the base allotment. We have determined a little bit of flexibility in the base allotment to increase fuel expenditures there. And, and then from there, we'll be bringing a modification to the PRC 056 allotment policy to describe the process of allotting additional fuel reserve funds. We'll bring that policy revision for the allotment policy next month, and we anticipate two rounds of that additional fuel money going out to the districts. The first one will cover through the beginning of February because we're going to collect that data this month so that it's ready to go if you approve the policy in March. Either way, we'll have the information. And then we'll do a second one towards the end of the school year, and that second one towards the end of the school year would cover through most of May. From there, they would just have to finish out the year. But yes, we anticipate that there will be sufficient funds to, to do all of this within the reserve presently.
So fortunately, we did put in for the reserve, and fortunately, the legislature granted, so we now can go through this additional allotment policies. Are there any questions for Kevin on either of these items?
Just a quick question.
Certainly.
Chair, a quick. I forgot to ask this in the day. Replacement is based upon the model year and not the mileage.
It is, so legislation describes it slightly differently than I'm about to do for you, but let me do it in three tiers. You have a 20-year replacement schedule with a minimum of 150,000 miles, okay? Or 15 to 19 years and 250,000 miles, or at any time, the vehicle will reach 300,000 miles, then it can be replaced early. Those are sort of the three tiers of the schedule for it. Thinking that the 300,000-mile vehicle is running, if a vehicle runs 2,000 or 3,000 or even 5,000 miles a year, those are much harder miles than a vehicle that runs 20,000 miles a year. Those are much easier miles. You're not stopping as much per mile. So the distinction is between all of those levels is sort of the, how hard the miles are on the vehicle.
Okay.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Kevin.
Do I recall that sometime in the last year or so, we had some discussion about buses that used alternative fuel sources or were more efficient? Does this money allow for districts to make some of those kinds of choices, or is it just...
That was a federal grant.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Well, there's, there's a couple of things going on. The federal grant for electric school buses, for electric and, actually, electric diesel and propane school buses, this funding is not really related to that. This funding is related to standard replacement. Standard replacement is diesel, but we do give districts the option of propane school buses as well. So because that's a minor increase in cost, we feel comfortable with that type of procurement. Of course, it, it doesn't work for electric because there's not anywhere near enough money should a lot of people decide to do electric, because electric vehicles are more expensive. So, yeah, no. This is predominantly, this is predominantly for diesel school buses replacements, which are much cleaner than they used to be, and propane, some propane. There's only a handful of districts that are interested in those. And then the electrics are all grant-based. So when the federal government gives grants or DEQ provides grants from Volkswagen Settlement, then we order electrics as part of those.
Kevin, just as a reminder, the hybrids right now, or the electrics, were somewhere in the range of three to four times the cost of a diesel.
They're pretty expensive, yes. Some 300, there's a price premium of several hundred thousand dollars, yes.
Just, just as a reminder, keep everyone in your mind what cost differential is as of this moment. That may change, of course, over time.
We hope that it will decrease over time and make the electric school bus more fiscally viable.
Mr. Coltrane, then Dr. Oxton.
I will say, the VW settlement funds that Mr. Harrison just mentioned, I think the first tranche of funds, there were like five electric buses ordered. DEQ just released another grant, and there were, it was dozens, I want to say it was like 30 or 40 electric buses that were ordered. So there's, we're going to start seeing more and more electric buses on the roads, which is great. And I think the federal funding that's going to be coming out is going to help spur that even more. So maybe 20 years from now, we'll see a whole different amount of money that's being requested for buses.
Financing for different purposes.
That's right.
Dr. Oxton.
So my question is, I asked this question, I think I did, several months ago, about the other costs related to going, going with e-buses. So on a school campus, would there need to be one charging station per bus?
There are lots of different ways to do it and lots of different sizes of charging stations. You can have something very simple, like a little wall charger, a little wall-mount charger, and you, you would do one per bus in that instance. More likely, if you ended up with large amounts of electric vehicles, you'd go for those economies of scale, grab a much bigger charger with a bunch of dispensing, for lack of a better term, we would call them fuel nozzles, but plugs, multiple wire, multiple cords running from one conversion stand, so to speak.
All right, that's the, oh, I do see.
I don't know why I'm fascinated with this topic, but I am. So then...
It's because BizOp really brings interest. It's because...
I know, I can't...
That's what you really wanted to say.
You said it very well. No, I'm kidding, I love it. The e-buses, that just causes me to pay attention. The other question has to do with, okay, capacity, size. How many stu-, would there be a change in number of students on a bus with an e-bus versus a fossil-fuel bus?
No, they would stay the same.
The same.
They're, they're produced at the same sizes and capacities as, as the other buses. So we would not expect any shift there.
Thank you. That's it.
Very good. You learned a lot. We'll be quizzing next month.
Certainly.
Our second contract, thank you, Kevin, our second contract is, Dr. Howard will briefly present on the ACT contract, which is a renewal, so she is on the one-minute time clock. Thanks, Lee.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duncan, and absolutely. So we are currently in the third year of a three-year contract with ACT. We have an option to extend it for two years, and our recommendation is to do that with respect to continuity and consistency and the fact that there is no cost change to the contract.
Any questions on this? All right, very good. And thank you, Dr. Howard, for your work on this and for keeping the price at the same levels so far.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that moves us into our second action on first reading, which is BizOp Two. And this is the State Board Policy Amendment to North Carolina Public Schools Alotment Policy on two areas that are not necessarily connected. One is driver training, and one is business system modernization, both important matters to us. John Kiefer's here, I understand, out of the sick bed. Thank you for making the effort to be here, John.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duncan. So yes, we do have two fairly unrelated, fairly unrelated amendments to the allotment policy manual. The first is for, for the driver's training policy. The change is to outline the formula and the criteria for the distribution of the driver's training fuel reserve, which was non-recurring funds that were included in the budget bill that was passed back in July. The statute required DPI to distribute these funds based on need. In order to do that, we have developed a formula based on the difference in the average fuel cost per student for the drivers, for LEA driver training programs between the period, for the school year 2018-19 and the period February 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2022. So comparing the, the average fuel cost per student from pre-pandemic to what we consider the height of last spring's fuel price spike. To be eligible for funding for the fuel reserve, from the fuel reserve, an LEA would have had to have experienced a greater than 10% increase in the average fuel cost per student for their driver training program between those two time periods. And the allotment of funds, the formula for the allotment of funds will be based on the difference between the average fuel cost per student multiplied by the estimated number of students to be served during the current school year in each LEA's driver's training program. There is a cap that we have applied on the maximum difference in the average fuel cost per student between the two periods, which is 150% of the school year 2018-19 average fuel cost. Any questions about that one?
All right, this is the easier of the two. Can we go to business systems modernization?
Yes. So the second, second policy to be amended is the Business Modernization LEA allotment, which is PRC 153. In addition to some changes to streamline the policy and to improve the clarity of the wording, we do have several substantive changes that we're bringing for approval. The first is to institute a cap on funding for participating LEAs at 90% of the one-time implementation costs and 90% of one-year software-as-a-service and managed service costs if the LEA has overlapping software and managed service costs. We are adding IBM Consulting as an approved vendor for the Oracle Fusion ERP cloud system, which is one of the two ERP cloud systems that are able to be funded through the, through the Business Modernization program. We have added language clarifying that unexpended funds at the end of one fiscal year may carry over for reallocation to the LEA for use in the subsequent fiscal year, subject to approval from the Office of State Budget and Management. And we have added a provision to ensure that an LEA that fails to implement the new system within three and a half years of executing an MOU with DPI may be subject to a repayment penalty of up to 100% of received funds, depending on the scope of implementation that has been completed in that timeframe.
Pausing because people are trying to digest, I think, the summary. I always like to say this in John's behalf, that just summarized about 250 pages worth of changes to the allotment policy in a concise way, but this is very important funding, and so I want everyone to be careful about the considerations here. This is difficult work, it's gone on for a while already. I think the effort here is to reform it in a way that is as fair as it can be to systems and recognizing that it's a multiple-year process, more times than not. So if there are any questions or comments, it's important to open it up to the floor for people to be able to ask us on this topic.
Mr. Chair, have we had any input from the LEAs?
Yeah, I do believe that, I mean, these changes represent kind of what we've learned from the first period of implementation of this program, and it has been a, there's been a close relationship and communication between DPI and the participating school districts during the first phase of this project. My colleague, Barry Pace, is here as well, he can probably add any kind of specifics around some of the outreach that his division has done in coming up with some of the programmatic changes that we're recommending for approval.
I do think it's fair to say the department's heard a lot from the LEAs with respect to these issues, perhaps not in the sense that you were asking the question, but Barry, is there something you would like to add to getting feedback from the LEAs as to this new proposed allotment policy?
Thank you, Vice Chair. So I will add to that, that I have spoken to my EBAC advisory group, as well as to all of the HR and finance officers across the state multiple times over the last, you know, 12 to eight, you know, 12 months, in regards to where we are with the overall budget for this program, and I have used the word 90%, you know, a dozen times. And so they are familiar with the concept, and every CFO that I have spoken to has been agreeable to that 10% type of, and, and understanding the rationale, both from a budgeting perspective as well as the, the district's, you know, overall responsibility and benefit from the program. I think maybe hopefully that answers your question.
I'm comfortable with that, I just wanted to make sure that we communicated.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this policy? All right, now hearing anything else, we'll be asked to approve these new, these two new allotment policies at our meeting tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the work on this very much. Our next item, also action on first read, is BizOp Three, which is Report to the North Carolina General Assembly on Career and Technical Education Industry Certifications and Credentials Teacher Bonus Report. So we have Nancy Cross back with us. This is Part Two that she alluded to earlier this morning. This is the bonus section of the CTE report. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity to come back and really just extend our conversation from this morning. This part's much shorter. We are attaching the bonus payment to the tiered credentials we spoke of earlier today. So just a quick summary, $1.2 million was allocated to 116 PSUs for a total of 1,478 teachers who had students on qualifying credentials. Those are Tier Two or Tier Three credentials. The sub-bullet separates those by tier, so you can see the 33,300 Tier Two credentials, each paid out at $25, and then 8,215 Tier Three credentials, each paid out at $50. There were 44 teachers across the state who qualified... There were 44 teachers across the state who qualified for the maximum bonus of $3,500, and so once that cap was applied, the allocation actually comes down to about $1.19 million. And the average teacher bonus was $806. While in the full report that you have in your materials, you will see each PSU and the allotment that was earned for bonuses. This highlights the top 10 PSU's, and as you would expect, you do see many larger districts there, just based on the size and number of credentials, but there are some, like Randolph County, for instance, it's the 23rd largest district in the state, but yet they made the top 10 list for earned credentials. And by looking at the top 10 districts, we see a little over half of the allocation going to those 10 districts at $648,000. And then there's always the requirement for us to research the impact the teacher credential bonus has on retention and recruitment. And so of the 293 respondents, based on the bonuses that were paid out in January of '22 and earned in the 2020-2021 school year, we see 38% indicating the bonus did influence their decision to remain in teaching, 20% acknowledging the bonus influenced their decision to expand or change the courses taught, and 20% responded that they were made aware of the opportunity to earn the teacher credential bonus when they entered the teaching profession. And that's it for this afternoon's conversation, except to say it's CTE Month, so I hope you enjoy that. So it's been a great day for me to share with you.
Well, you shared a lot of great information, so thank you for that. It's important to note that these reports are made pursuant to statutory terms that are set out with respect to making this report, number one, and number two, the State Board had the responsibility for creating a teacher performance bonus program, and also to report on the more difficult, which is part two, what the effect of retention is. And I think that's been difficult to get a handle on through the years. It's important to highlight this year, this survey approach was used, and that's new, to try to get the best possible handle on some meaningful information to be able to report back to the General Assembly. Dr. Oxendine?
Just a quick question. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair Duncan. I just think, personal, I just think that the CTE cover in North Carolina is the best. And I've always been so impressed with CTE since I've been a member of the board. The things that go on in your division are quite amazing. My question about the bonus, the administration of the bonus, is that done by out of the central office or the CTE coordinator at the school side? How is that managed?
The distribution of funds.
Keeping up with the bonuses and what have you.
Right. So there is a report that my office generates that then goes to each local district's HR department into their secure shell, and then there's communication and collaboration between the local CTE director and the HR department to verify those funding amounts. So CTE really is verifying that the credentials were earned and documented and that sort of thing, and then HR is verifying that they still meet the requirements of still being a teacher and still being employed and not having left before January 1st of the following year, and all those particulars.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Hall.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just a comment. If I read correctly, 116 PSU's receiving.
Correct.
So that means that everybody?
Well, 115 PSU's would include some charters and LEAs. So, yes.
Oh, okay.
So there are some, there's some traditional LEAs that did not receive any credential bonus and some charters that did.
Okay. I forgot about that.
No, good question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much for the good news you brought today.
You're very welcome. Thank you all.
We now move to BizOP 4, and we have another repeat customer for us, Melissa Davis, who at this time is going to talk about a rules update relating to remote academies' hardware and software fees. And this requires rules because it requires the potential of charging students and/or their families. Ms. Davis, please.
So state law 2022-59 enacted general statutes, Chapter 234. To provide for remote academies in local school administrative units beginning with the 2023-24 school year, a local administrative unit may apply to the SBE for approval of remote academies that meet requirements outlined in legislation. Among other requirements, the legislation addresses fees that local school administrative units may charge students enrolled in remote academies for computer hardware and software that is necessary to participate in remote academy instruction. The legislation distinguishes between rental fees for hardware and software needed to participate in the remote academy and fees for damage, abuse, or loss of hardware or software. The legislation specifically provides that students may not be charged rental fees, but may be charged damaged fees for abuse or loss of hardware or software under rules adopted by the State Board of Ed. To implement the statute and permit local administrative units to charge students in remote academies damaged fees, we propose the following rule that provides definitions for damaged fees and rental fees. Can you see those rules have been provided for you? Please note in the version of the rule provided in board materials, the present paragraph B is an editorial comment and will not be in the published rule. It was included simply to explain the SBE intent of the rule. We are proposing these definitions as a temporary rule so that it will be in place before the remote academies start up during the 2023-24 school year. In order to comply with the Office of Administrative Hearing's style guide and to place the definitions in context, we may need to make technical changes to the rule, but the substance will remain the same. After a period for public comment, we will bring this rule back with any changes for permanent adoption as a temporary rule at the April 2023 board meeting. Within 270 days of adoption of the temporary rule, the board must adopt a permanent rule. So sometime later in 2023, the board will reconsider this rule and decide whether to adopt it as a permanent rule.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Do we have questions on this? Yes, please.
Is this the same type of academy as we were talking about earlier, the 42 that we already have?
Yes, sir.
And does this apply to them as well?
Yes, it does.
So the key language here, just to note, is "may" charge. There have been debates in a lot of districts about whether they should charge depending upon the circumstances. So this gives the ability, but it's not necessarily a requirement to charge. So that's a district-by-district examination, but this provides, assuming we were able to get the temporary rule in place, this provides the districts the ability to make that kind of decision.
Yes, sir.
Based on their community standards.
Mr. Duncan, you had mentioned in our committee meeting, too, the question around whether the damaged fees permitted in the proposed rule could be waived, and that will depend on how a local school administrative unit administers its policies on fee waivers.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions on this? Thank you very much. We now move to our final action on first reading, item BizOP 5, which is the Innovative Partnership Grant for the Fiscal Year 24 Cohort 3 Competitive Grant Program. Tina Letchworth is here to discuss that with us. We have heard these before, and so we appreciate the work that the Office of Federal Programming puts in on these grants.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Superintendent Truitt, Chair Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, and board members and advisors. I'm here this afternoon to discuss with you our proposal for funding for our Cohort 3 for the Innovative Partnership Grant. This is a competitive grant that is offered to public school units that is funded through the Title I Part A. It provides technical assistance and support to our public school units who have schools that are identified in need of comprehensive and support and improvement. The support that these funds can provide are additional fiscal resources, technical support. We also provide regular school visits that allow support to hopefully allow the school to exit CSI, the federal designation status. Pillars of the program, the grant, require a 12-month IPG school coach who will assist the school with the leadership and implementation of the evidence-based school improvement strategies. It also requires an external collaborative partner that partners with the school, with the coach, as well as the administration and the district, to implement those strategies over the three-year period of the grant. It also provides targeted supports from DPI. We provide onsite visits, program quality reviews, as well as cohort convenings, office hours, et cetera, monthly to guide them through the three-year program. Here you will see a breakdown of previous, regional breakdown of previous awards in various school systems across the state. And you will notice that we have, if you could go back, sorry, go right there. You'll see a breakdown with Cohort 1A and 1B, as well as Cohort 2, where you will see that there are 35 current active innovative partnership grants right now. And in those 35, with the new CSI federal designation list that came out this fall, I'd like to point out that within Cohort 1A and B, 15 of those 22 exited CSI status at a rate of 68% exiting. And of Cohort 2, nine of those 13 did exit CSI status at a rate of 70% exit. So of the 24 of the 35 currently being served with the Innovative Partnership Grant have exited CSI status. Here you will see the breakdown of those previous award winners, and now we would like to present our eligibility requirements, the next slide. For Cohort 3, we are proposing, and we would like to make the IPG grant eligible for those districts who have one or more schools identified under the federally approved definition of CSI that also are recognized as Tier 2. In our CSI list that came out this fall, if a CSI school was reappearing on the list from the 1819 list, they were deemed to become Tier 2. Tier 2 means they need the second level of support, and so this is an effort with this grant in Cohort 3 to provide another level of support for those Tier 2 identified schools. We also have that the IPG Cohort 3 would only be offered to those who are not currently or previously as Cohort 1A and B in this year funded through IPG. So this further, if we'll go back one slide, you can see that we had, or I'm sorry, another one, you can see that we had those that were eligible in the Cohort 1A, 1B, it went smaller, and then even in Cohort 2, only 80 were eligible. In this competition, we are identifying only 26 schools across the state would be eligible that are identified as Title 2. So we've provided you a list of those Tier 2 schools. They represent 17 public school units across the state. Five of those are charters, one lab, and 11 LEAs. So there are the 26, and they are also further identified for you whether they are Tier 2 in low performing status or Tier 2 in low graduation rate identified by the federal designation of low performing and low graduation rate. Our goal is to, our selection process will be to have one PSU per eligible State Board of Education region pending submission of the applications. And right now, with intent to apply from those 17 public school units, we have had 12 public school units to express an interest that they will apply. We will have additional schools that may be recommended from, in addition to the eight that will come from the State Board regions, a minimum of eight when we take the total applications and rank those in order. We do present on the next slide that we will reward between $250,000 to $500,000 awards per year for a three-year cycle that will run through September 30th of 2026. And in the timeline for this competition, again, we have done some intent to apply solicitation across the state. We are presenting this to you today with hopes that with approval, we will open the competition. The application would open next week, close in April. We will have reviews in our partnership with the University of UNCG and SERVE Center to have those items scored March, April, with information provided to us in the May-June and bringing to you for awards in July for fiscal year '24. Are there any questions?
Thank you for that presentation. Our motion will be to approve the Process 4 and the opening of the competition for these grants. Any questions about those? It obviously will come back to us when it's time to approve the grant.
Yes.
Ms. Letchworth, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have an executed contracts report that you've received, as well as a planned contracts report. Have not heard any questions about those, but are there any, so that we can get those answered? And then finally, you've received a copy, as we do monthly, of the budget status reported. Any questions on that? Not hearing any. Chair Davis, we have, Mr. Hall and I have completed our work today.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duncan. That actually concludes our open session agenda for today. We'll now move into closed session, and at this time, I'll ask for a motion to go into closed session. Vice Chair Duncan?
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318.11A, 1, 3, and 6, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Sections 115(c) - 319 and -321 and 120-129 et cetera, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, or condition of appointment of public officers or employees or prospective public officers or employees, and to consult with our attorneys in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the public body, including a discussion of the following pending cases: OM versus NCISD, Cooper versus DPI, Phillips versus DPI, and Northeast Raleigh Charter Academy Doing Business as Torchlight Academy versus Torchlight Academy Schools LLC et al. versus North Carolina State Board of Education and Stephen Bowens.
Motion by Vice Chair Duncan, second by the Treasurer.
Second.
Dr. Petrie Martin.
Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Mrs. Camnitz?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Blackburn?
Yes.
Dr. Ford?
Yes.
Treasurer Falwell?
Yes.
Lieutenant Governor Robinson? Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes. Motion carries. Let's be in closed session at 3:50. It's about 10 minutes. And reminder to those still with us that we will adjourn immediately following closed session, but we will be back for our official meeting tomorrow, February 2nd, beginning promptly at 9:00 a.m.